Let's start this study session of August 18th, 2020. It's called Order. Kathy, would you do the pledge allegiance for us?
I will.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Man, I can't wait to do that live again.
What?
It's not in sync ever. I can't wait to do that live again.
I know.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Aaron B. Miller has information for us about the 2021 budget.
All right, I'll share my screen here. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me pick up the early, the correct one here. So we've got two presentations for you tonight. The first one is on the early budget assumptions. There we go. Early budget assumptions. So what we're going to talk about this evening, just the 2021 budget calendar, where we are and what's left to come. We're going to spend just a little bit of a time on a 2020 high-level financial status check-in and really what that is, just comparing where we are now through June and comparing that to our 2020 budget as well as our year-end estimates. Then we'll talk at a high level, some of our assumptions, our current assumptions for general fund revenues, current assumptions for general fund expenses. And then also we'll talk about some budget timing and the potential of a COVID-19 impact and where that would leave us. So, starting off with the budget calendar, you can see that we are right about in the middle now, the week of August 17th. It's been a, it's been a very condensed calendar again this year, and a lot of that is a result of getting Open Gov up and running as well as trying to do that through all the COVID and the closures and all of that. But we think we're in a good position now. Departments are meeting with finance and with the city manager this week on their supplemental requests. Next, then we'll have a study session tonight on the 18th. And then moving forward, we have preliminary decisions by the city manager at the end of August. And final decisions early September. We'll come back to you on September 15th for another council study session on the budget. We'll be much further along and have more concrete information for you at that time. And then we'll spend September putting together the proposed budget, and it will be presented on October 6th, and then October, November will be council consideration of the budget, then hopefully we'll get it adopted in December. So, a lot to do yet and pretty, pretty aggressive timeline there. High-level current year budget status, and so this is just a check-in, and I think I probably mentioned this to you last year at this time when we started looking at some year-end estimates. They need to be taken with a grain of salt right now because what departments will generally do is they'll overestimate on their expenses and they'll underestimate on their revenues. And that's just a natural part of this because they don't want to, but they don't want to show that they're coming in lower than they actually do, and they also don't want to assume higher revenue. So as we work through this, as we continue through the rest of the year, these numbers will start to shape up a little bit and get a little bit more clear. The reason I wanted to really show this to you today is to take a look at this, well, this, and this is through June, so half a year, to take a look at the 2020 budget column in the middle and especially the variance where it's an increase or decrease line. And then compare that to the 2020 estimates, and what we're hoping to see in every case is that the 2020 estimate is showing a better financial picture than we budgeted. And so if you looked at the general fund, the top one there, obviously we had a balanced budget for 2020, and right now the estimates are coming in that we will be favorable by about $37,000. So that's just saying things seem to be going in, in the right direction right now. Street, again, we budgeted an $800,000 use of fund balance, but it's looking like that's going to be reduced down to about a 777. So again, a little bit better financial picture. It's better or worse is kind of arbitrary in this, but we're planning on, it looks like we're going to spend less fund balance than we thought we would. Capital Resources, that's the Capital Resources Fund, which is the new fund, which only has revenue. REIT, traffic impact fees, and those types of revenues go in there, and they are coming in a little bit lower than we had planned. Tourism, looks like it's getting worse, but it's really not. If you'll remember, when we budgeted the tourism fund, we budgeted at a level that was lower than the actual grant awards, and so when we bring the September budget adjustment forward, that will fix that. And so the, so the budget will be in line with what was actually presented there. I won't go through all of these. I'll just pick and choose a few of them. The ones that are in a, kind of looking as if they're not a positive variant. So down at the bottom, the drainage fund. We had budgeted a $10,000 use of fund balance. Looks like it's going to come in at $73,000, $74,000 use of fund balance. And the driving force behind that is the revenues. In the budget column, we assumed a 50% increase in fees when we did the 2020 budget. That has been put on hold, and so it's really the, the revenues not coming in according to budget, but we've also, as much as we can, have also started to save on the expenditure side. So it's, it's, we're trying to make that picture just a little bit better there. Again, not much to see here. The EMNR fund I will mention because that had $127,000 use of fund balance budget, and it looks like it's going to come in at 273, 274. There's a revenue issue there that I found. I can't exactly remember which line it is, but one revenue was accidentally deleted, and when that revenue is added back into the estimate, that will be back in shape, that fund. So that's really it for those funds. Again, it's just really a touch base, a temperature check, if you will, at this point in time. This is a slide of our 2020 general fund revenues, and on the top half of this slide, you can see our June year-to-date numbers and our budget numbers, and then the dollar variance to budget. So what that is, it's the budget number minus the June year-to-date number comes to the budget variance, and then the percent of budget collected to date. And as you can see, we are, you know, relatively good looking through June, at least in terms of taxes. This is at the subtotal, there's a little asterisk there, and just wanted to remind the council that the taxes in the general fund represent 64% of total general fund revenues. So those coming in where they are at this point in time is, is a good view for us. The bottom half of this shows our 2020 budget as compared to the 2020 estimate at this point in time. And again, same thing, then we have the dollar variance and the percent. So you can see the property taxes, we're estimating those to come in right about where they should be. Sales taxes, we haven't seen any impact to those, so we're estimating now that those will come in where they should be. BNO taxes, same story. And really, it's the same, same story all the way through the taxes. One that is significant, the city utility taxes, that is our utility tax on water, sewer, and solid waste. It is a large increase, the variance. That's because when we put the budget together for 2020, we didn't account for the prepayment of solid waste utility tax that came in 2018 being used up, and now we are receiving that revenue. So that's budgeted, or shown in the estimate here, and we're budgeting that amount in the 2021 budget. So again, all in all, as it looks right now, general fund revenue seem to be in a, in a good position. Our current revenue assumptions for the 2021 budget, and current is italicized and underlined because these may change. We have property tax increasing at 1.15%, and that's made up of the 1% statutory maximum. And then we have a 0.15% right now for any new construction and delinquent penalties that come in. And of course, the actual collections will be based on the county assessors' valuations, which the preliminary valuations were coming out in a bit, and then the final valuations near the end of the year. Sales tax right now, we are budgeting that as flat for 2021, so it's budgeted the same level as 2020. Same for the BNO tax, we're keeping that flat. City and non-city utility taxes, so the city utility taxes, of course, are the water, sewer, solid waste. The non-city are electricity and gas and those types of utilities. We're budgeting those flat as well. Building permitting, that's where we are seeing a little bit of a reduction from being closed mostly. So we are going to budget those right now. Our current assumption is that we'll budget those at our 2020 estimated levels, which is roughly a $40,000 decrease to those revenue lines. Utility service revenue, that's water services, solid waste services, sewer services, right now. We are thinking that we will increase the budget based on any service fee charges, and we'll add that to the actual revenues, less any one-time revenues. So what that really means is the service revenue that we're getting in now is just a little bit below our budgeted amount by a couple of percents, maybe 3%. What we're going to do for the time being is assume that those revenues will continue to come in at the higher fee rate, but we'll take out any one-time revenues, and the significant one-time revenue is the payment from, I believe, Washington State Patrol for back pay in the, in the sewer fund, so we'll eliminate that. And then our other revenues are just assumed to come in line with our current estimates. The current 2021 base budget for expenses include our current labor assumptions. We have the cost of living budgeted 3.0 increase right now. I will tell you, that is above CPI. It is the lowest percent increase of any of our labor contracts right now. So that's where that is right now. That may change. Healthcare, budgeted a 7.5% increase. We're taking that lead from Association of Washington Cities who sent that guidance out. Remember, last year, healthcare was, I think, a 0% increase. Dental, same thing. Last year was, I believe, zero. This year, AWC is recommending 3% increase on those. And our retirement, we get that information from the state. That's just a slight increase of just 0.12%. That's what we have in for our labor right now. Our current budgeted FTE for 2020 was 101.5. In 2021, right now, we have 97.5, and those four positions that were, were the vacant positions that were eliminated as part of the COVID-19 reductions. They are not in the budget at this time. Current total labor costs at this point in time, last year it was about $10.3 million. This year it's about $10.46 million, so about $180,000 increase. And that's going to be driven by those four less bodies that we have in there. Service contracts, so professional services, we budgeted that as a 2.5% increase. And then all other expenses right now for 2020 are budgeted at the 2020 level. So again, we're, we're taking a fairly conservative view or fairly conservative approach to our budgeting process, which is our, which is our style. So potential COVID impacts. So through June, the city has not experienced a significant change in revenues. However, there are still some unknowns, and, you know, we've talked about these several times now. The impact of the $600 weekly unemployment subsidy going away, how will that affect our revenues? Any potential rollbacks from the governor's office of moving from stage three down to stage two or whatnot? The continued impacts from utility shut-off for non-payment, this has a couple of aspects to it. A, it seems like more and more customers are realizing that the utilities won't be shut off. And B, that means there are some significant dollar values being owed right now to the city, and that's going to have to be something that we talk about when the shut, or when the shut-off is ended, or the, the, the non-shut-off is ended and what that means. So that will be a further, a future conversation, I should say. Economic changes from the November election, you know, obviously there will likely be something there, but we don't know what that is. And then any long-term impacts on spending habits from what we've been going through. So, we are preparing our 2021 budget with an eye toward these unknowns, but without significant assumptions related to that. If there are revenue impacts coming in the second half of the year, it will come at a time where it will be too late for us to be able to go back and significantly change the proposed budget and balance. So if something happens, what we would do is we would recommend to the council that they adopt the proposed budget as presented with a clear understanding then that we would be bringing supplemental budget changes back to them soon in 2021 in the first quarter or so. So that's where we'd go with that, and I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are any questions.
I have one.
Yeah.
It's just a simple little, what is the drainage fund?
Sorry, that is the storm fund.
Okay.
Storm drainage. Sorry about that, yeah.
Why, why did you change the name of it?
We officially did not. I just shortcut it on the spreadsheet I was working on and didn't think to put the whole name down.
All right, thank you.
Aaron, with some of those, I think early on when you started, you said we spent less money this year. I think it was 300 and some odd thousand, wasn't it?
In which?
In the stormwater fund?
Was it back in the first page of, when you first started?
I want to go back and see.
And you say we spent less than you anticipated?
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Slide four.
Slide four, okay, let me, oops, now I'm messing something up here. Let me try this again.
I was just wondering if that had anything to do with, you know, Jeff making sure that we didn't buy anything we didn't need.
Oh, are you talking about the Capital Resources Fund?
I think it was. It was back quite a ways.
Okay, so can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the end, when, when the 2020 budget was adopted back in December, we also created what was called, what's called a capital resources fund. And what we use that fund for is we store revenues that are designated for capital purposes in there. And so our transportation impact fee monies go in there, our REIT monies go in there. And I'm forgetting something else at this point that goes in there. But there is no expenditure budget for 2020s. 310 is what we assumed for revenues, but those are coming in lower, so we've reduced the, the estimate of those revenues down to $100,000. It doesn't have any impact on current year operations or anything.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody else?
If I may, Aaron, could you talk a little bit about how we decided to budget flat for both BNO and sales tax? Because I know one of the things that we've discussed is the lag that we see in when those are receded to the city, and how those impacts may not have been felt quite yet. And while online shopping is up, and hopefully people are using their city address for point of destination, so we're collecting that sales tax revenue. Businesses are feeling a lot of stress right now, and seeing what that's going to look like budget-wise, can you speak a little bit about, I guess, the strategy or the thought process behind that?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and by far, that's probably the, the furthest out-there assumption that we would want to go. The reason that we currently are budgeting flat sales tax is just simply because we haven't seen an impact yet. And while it's very potential that with those, the subsidy reduction and all of the, all of the changes, that we will start to see that, again, the problem is, is that August sales taxes, we won't know until October. So, so we're leaving it flat for the time being, knowing that that may be something that has to be addressed early in 2021. I think the, the short answer is we've kind of been expecting those numbers to go down, and we haven't seen that yet. And what we're, what I'm not sure of, because they are going down in other areas that may have a different type of sales tax base, which maybe they have cars and boats and RVs and all of that that are really impacting their sales tax revenues. Ours seems to be holding flat or steady, and maybe that's because most of our sales tax comes a lot from normal functioning of life purchases, if that makes sense, and that those would continue. So I agree with you, that is probably an assumption that we are going, that is an assumption that we are going to have to take, keep a real keen eye on, but at this point, we want to just leave that flat and then work with our expenses within that. Rather than moving that back some level, like, you know, $200,000, whatever it is, and then having to perhaps cut positions as a result of that assumption. This way, if it does come in below where we're, where we're, where we're estimating, and we do see that, then we can do that work when there's a little bit more time that we can strategize that moving forward. That's maybe not a great answer, but that's the thinking behind it at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, should we move on? You ready?
Sure.
All right, so Aaron, you're up again with the information about 2020 debt funding, refunding.
All right, let me share this screen. Okay, 2020 bond refunding. So our refunding team that we're using, our municipal advisor is Justin Monway from Piper Sandler and Company. Our bond counsel is Deanna Gregory from Pacifica Law Group. The underwriters for this sale is Jeff Urbina and Caitlin Caldwell from KeyBank Capital Markets. And the bond registrar is Carolyn Morrison from US Bank. This is a team that I've been with for about four or five refundings. Great team, very sharp. And the nice thing is that they know what they're doing, so we get to sit back and let them walk us through this. Carolyn, just the bond registrar, she's on there. She's not really a big part of the refunding process, but what the bond registrar does is they register the bonds, and so when we make interest payments, that's the person who knows who has purchased the bonds and who gets those interest payments. So that's a lot of work that we don't have to do, so I wanted to, to mention her. And of course, these guys have a bunch of people behind them, helping them out. Want to just talk real quickly about debt capacity. It's also sometimes called the legal debt limit. And the debt capacity applies to the principal balance of general obligation debt. And so the important thing about GEO debt, it's debt that the city has pledged its full faith and credit toward repayment. And because we are pledging our full faith and credit toward repayment, it typically will have the lowest interest rate. State law allows for GEO debt issuance up to 7.5% of the city's assessed valuation. And that 7.5 is sorted into three 2.5 pieces, one for municipally-owned water, sewer, or electric facilities, one of the 2.5 for open space, and the last 2.5 for general government. So except for, as described in the bullet below, all GEO debt issuance requires a vote of the people. The rules around that, our voter turnout must be at least 40% of the number of voters in the most recent general election, and it has to pass by 60%. But within the 2.5 limit for general government purposes, state law allows for the issuance of 1.5% of assessed value for what's called non-voted or councilmatic bonds. The council can issue councilmatic bonds for any of the three purposes. Parks, utilities, or general government, but the debt is always applied to the 2.5% that is for general government purposes, regardless of how we use that money. So just a quick glimpse, in 2020, our assessed value was 773 million. If you take three of those 2.5s, each 2.5 is about 19.3, which means our legal debt limit is $57,984,000. 1.5% for a councilmatic legal debt limit is almost $11.6 million. So the important thing, just like any household budget, while the city has the capacity to issue this much debt, we can only issue debt if we have the ability to pay both the principal and interest costs. So with this refunding, we have a busy schedule. In order to try and achieve the best rates possible, the city is moving forward with the schedule events in an effort, well, which will close the bond sale prior to the November collection, or November collections, November elections. So we have a bunch of city information, a bunch of city data that is due for what's called the preliminary official statement. That's due tomorrow. We sent off 95% of it today, so we're well on track there. We'll be bringing the first, the council, that will be bringing to council the Bond Ordinance on Business Agenda on the 15th. And I just want to say a quick couple of thoughts on that. The bond ordinance is basically a legal document, but it's going to do a couple of things that I want to make the council aware of. One, it's going to say that the life of a bond cannot be extended. So we can refund, but we can't make, we can't take any bonds and put them further out. Like sometimes if you refinance your house, you've been in it for 26 years, or you've been in it for four years and you have 26 left on your mortgage, you can refund it and put that back out to 30 years and, and continue on from there. We aren't going to be able to do that. It will also say that we have to have a net present value savings of at least 3% on the bonds. And it will also delegate the purchase of the bonds to the finance director so that we can purchase the bonds at a time that is best for us, regardless of whether there's a council meeting or not. So it will have, oh, and, and it will have a time constraint for how long that, that delegation process lasts. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Happy to answer any questions of that at the end if there are any. The week of, the 21st of September, we'll have a rating call with Standard and Coors. They are a bond rating agency. We're going to talk about them in just a slide or two. Assuming council is okay on the 15th, we will bring the bond ordinance back to council on action on the 16th. Then on the 14th of October, we would do our bond pricing, and then October 28th would be the bond closing. So it is a, it is a fast-moving schedule to get this done. So I talked about S&amp;P, the Standard and Coors. There are three major rating agencies for municipal bonds, and that's Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. And what these agencies do is they essentially give us a credit rating, much like a credit rating that you would have for, for your personal finances. So they'll, they'll examine and, and evaluate our risk. So a lot of factors go into making the determination. But oftentimes, bond rating is the single most important factor affecting the interest rate, the interest costs that we will get on the refunding. And so it will behoove us to get a rating as high as possible. Rating agencies use the following factors in their evaluation of credit risk. They'll look at the economy, that's something that we just don't have much control over. And unfortunately, they're going to be looking at the economy during COVID-19. I don't know what impact that will have on us, on us, but because we are going to be compared to other organizations like ourselves, I don't know that that will necessarily make it unfavorable. They'll look at our debt structure. We have a lot of debt for our city, albeit most of it's in the utilities and most of that is the wastewater treatment plant bonds that we've issued in the sewer fund. But they're going to want to take a look at that, what rates we're paying on those, how long the debt will continue, when the, when the final maturity date is, and those types of things moving forward. They'll look at our financial condition, and what they mean by financial condition here is they're going to be looking at the city's finances. How have we been doing over the last few years? Probably over the last five years, what changes in our financial condition have happened that is either positive or negative in terms of our credit risk? They'll look at demographic factors, again, those are pretty much outside of our control, but they're going to be looking at things such as unemployment rate, they're going to look at job employment types. They'll look at the makeup of the city, so that will go into their, into their factors. And then again, something that we do have a lot of control over, management practices of the municipality. And again, this is where we can talk about some of the things that we're working toward and what we've accomplished in the past. So those are the things that the rating agencies are going, the rating, I should say, the rating agency will look at. We are only going to use Standard and Coors. Standard and Coors, they're, they, AAA is what they consider the best quality. That means that the organization that is issuing a bond has a extremely low risk. And then it goes down from there and you can see that they go from AAA, AA+, AA, AA-, and so on and so forth. In 2013, for the bond sale, the city was rated at an A+. You can see that as the high end of the upper medium grade for risk. And one of the notes that is on the S&amp;P website was that in 2013, the city's strong fund balance was a significant factor in the rating. So it does behoove us to have those fund balances and maintain adequate fund balances. And what they'll do is they'll use a mathematical ratio to compare issuers, but subjectivity will absolutely come into play. I would say that, you know, we're hoping that we can maintain an A+ at least. I think an A+ rating would be great, but that's not what we should be striving for. I think we should be striving for a double A rating moving forward. The current refunding that we'll do is we are going to refund seven separate debt instruments into one refunding bond. In order to achieve the highest savings, the refunding bond will be a non-voted general obligation bond. So it's a councilmatic bond in which the debt is paid, the debt is backed by the full faith and credit of the government. That doesn't mean the, the funds that currently pay those debts will continue to pay those debts. It doesn't mean this is a general fund obligation all of a sudden. It just means that we are going to put the full faith and credit of the city behind these payments. So there isn't any change to who's paying, it will just be a change to how much they're paying. And like a house refinance, we're not, we're not refunding the principal balance. The principal balance will stay the same. The funding that we, the, the savings that we achieve is based on a lower interest rate. So just like a home refinance. Not all the bonds that we are refunding are currently GO bonds. We want to use GO bonds because we would, we will get the best interest rate. But this refunding will take up a significant portion of that 1.5% of councilmatic debt capacity. So it'll be about 9 million of the available 11.6 million of non-voted debt. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is debt we already have that we're going to refinance to save money on interest. One of the due diligence questions that we will be hearing a lot from our bond counsel, from the rating agency, from our financial advisor and so on and so forth, is does the city have any plans to issue debt in the next 24 months? We are telling them a resounding no. Because, well, A, we don't have any plans, but also that may be viewed unfavorably moving forward. If we say, yeah, we're going to issue another 3 million over here and another couple million over here, that's going to impact our, our credit risk moving forward. The current assumption of this, of this refunding is that we'll retain at least our A+ rating. And with that, the funding will result in an estimated net present savings in the neighborhood of about $1.7 million or 18% over the life of the bonds. So when we talked about the bond ordinance, we said that one of the, one of the things the ordinance will have is that the net present value savings must be 3% or higher, we are well past that. And as a net present value savings of 1.7, the true cash savings on the bond is about $2.7 million. But with the time value of money, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. That we wanted to say, hey, in today's dollars, what we're doing is going to save $1.7 million over the life of the bonds. And also, we talked about that the, the ordinance will not allow us to extend the, any debt duration. What this refunding will do is we'll also shorten several of our debt instruments by five to seven years. So we have some there up, the 2051, 2052. Some of those will shrink into about 2045 and so on and so forth. So what's great about this is we're saving good money. We're going to achieve, achieve a lower interest rate and we are shortening the amount of time that we have bonds out there and are making payment on them. So happy to answer any questions on the bond refunding.
Yeah, I got, I got one and you, you kind of hinted on it, but I was curious what this does for future borrowing, if there is any impact within, within that window. You had mentioned, you know, a 24-month window, if we intend on borrowing in 24 months. But, you know, I, I think of the unforeseen emergencies or things like that. You know, the stuff that keeps us awake at night, right? So any, any future potential impacts to our ability to borrow?
Not necessarily. First and foremost, the question that we're asked is, do you plan? And if we're not, we're not planning, it's an honest answer to say no. If the world changes and something happens and, you know, we have to borrow, we still have the capacity to do that, we still have the ability to do that. The issue that I would mention is that since we're using GO debt on this and we're using it as councilmatic debt, we're filling up about 9 million of our currently available, available 11.6 million of councilmatic debt. As we go through time, in theory, assessed value will keep rising and that debt will keep getting paid off. And so that 2.6 million that we have now will slowly widen i- in the event that there's a future, a future need. And so there is always that risk. That being said, I think that it would be great as we move forward to try to become more of a pay-as-you-go structure for some of these larger projects and make sure that we're planning out over time and saying, if we need to do this in three years, then we need to start storing some money aside so that we can pay those without going out to debt. That's, I'm not anti-debt by any stretch, but there's also a price to pay for, for taking debt.
Right, and I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with anything you just said. But yeah, at some point in time, the unforeseen circumstances do, do happen. And making, it, it sounds like the risk is well worth it. But yeah, at some point in time, things, things do crumble and we do need to maintain the ability to, to deal with that. So thanks for clarifying, appreciate it.
And Aaron, this should also gives the ability not to be raising some sewer rates, maybe anytime soon, water rates?
I wouldn't, well, I guess that's a, the answer to that is, it depends. What this will do for the bonds that are being refunded that are sewer, that are sewer paid for by the sewer, it will reduce the annual cost to that. But the other side of that is there's, if we have some sort of project that we need to fund and we need to raise rates to do that, or cost of living adjustments so that we can maintain operations. I mean, there's a whole lot of, of pieces that go into that bucket to sort out. So fundamentally, I would say that it doesn't necessarily preclude that, but it certainly helps on saving at least some money in that, that sewer pays right now.
Most of that debt is sewer debt, correct?
A, a, a substantial part, yes. I, I don't, I don't know exactly what percentage, but yeah, a lot of it is.
And Councilmember Nisco, we are working on, as you all know, we're all working on the sewer comprehensive plan and the water comprehensive plan. And we'll have a much better idea with the capital improvement programs contained within those plans, what it's going to look like going forward. But we can certainly have those discussions at that time when those plans are finished.
And we'll take into account this possible 1.7 million reduction.
Absolutely.
In payments. Thank you.
So Eric brings up an interesting point. So could you re-clarify that we're not receiving a $1.7 million check when this happens? We, we're saving 1.7 million over a longer term, correct?
That's correct, we won't be receiving a check that size, unfortunately. But what it, yeah, what it, what it will do is we're following along with council strategic goals and what council has requested of, of me and our leadership team. And that is to plan long-term and plan strategically for the future of the city. So this is a proposal to set the city up and the citizens that live here and the rapiers that live here up for a more sustainable future.
No, no problem, I just, and when, and when Eric said it and then we had, we had talked about it, I think we all understood it, but for the record, I just wanted to, wanted to make sure it was clear to everybody else watching tonight.
Okay. We're, we're available.
Anything else?
Yeah. We're available to answer questions on this or any other, any other thing as they come up.
Okay.
Good stuff, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, if that's, if that's it for tonight, we'll adjourn our regular council meeting, I mean, our study session at 5:45.